Good afternoon. Today is December 5th, 2022. You are part of the Rowan County Commission Meeting, here, the first meeting in December. We are honored that you are here with us. We're honored to have so many friends and family, and those of you who are watching here today. It has been the tradition of this board and boards all across America. We do a few things before we get down to business, and they're both important. We're going to have our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor, come up, and he's going to provide for us what is called a solemnizing prayer. That prayer is for us, the commissioners. It's not for you, but you're welcome to listen. And we do this because what we do here, we take very seriously. We pray for wisdom each day, and Chaplain Taylor's going to come forward and do the same. Because what we do here, we think affects a lot of people, and we want to make sure we're doing things in a wise way. After that, we'll have the pledge, and so commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Commissioners, thank you for the honor and privilege to pray for you. We appreciate you, love you, what you do. Our Father, we come to you today, and we do thank for our county commissioners, dear Lord, all the sacrifice they do and the work they do. Rowan County, dear Lord, we pray you'll continue to give them the wisdom they need. You said, "If any man lacked wisdom, let him ask of God, which giveeth liberty and uprighteth not." So I'm coming to you in their behalf, asking you to give them the wisdom they need, help them in this meeting today, dear Lord, give them the strength they need. Again, thank you for their support, Rowan County. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, for being with us. It's always an honor to have you. Before we move forward, I did want to do some special recognition. We have with us here in the audience today, North Carolina House-elect Representative from District 83, Kevin Crutchfield. I can't see him because of the... Well, thank you, and please welcome him here. But also like to recognize Rowan County's newest sheriff. Sheriff Travis Allen was sworn in this morning. Sheriff, would you please stand? And for you two gentlemen, you are in our prayers, and we will pray for wisdom as you carry out your office duties as well, and certainly health and safety. And then you'll hear from, in a moment, we are honored to have North Carolina Supreme Court Chief Justice Paul Newby here with us today. Can't stress how honored we feel to have him here. But even more so, we are honored to have his lovely wife here, Macon. Macon, would you stand and let us welcome you? I would say that I've never seen Justice Newby without her. I think every time I've ever seen him, she's been with him, and that's a good thing, and we appreciate the support. And I know that you guys are both wedded to this job, and so thank you for your support of a good man. So thank you. So, let's see. Commissioners, we have the November 21st, 2022 minutes. Do we have a motion to approve that? All right, motion of second. All in favor, say aye. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn in a second? All in favor, say aye. Right now, we'll do the oath of office for three of us, and we'll move on from there. So Jim, and Judy, and myself, I guess we'll just go out front, one at a time, and Justice Newby, if you could come forward.
All 100.
Okay, all right. So, let's go back to, I won't repeat all of it, okay? I'll just go back to, like I said, all the way to biblical times, and it's a psalm occasion where folks set aside their own personal self-interest and before the witnesses that are gathered here, but also before God, that they promise to do as best they can what is right and just and fair in every situation. It's an occasion for all of us to reflect on the importance of the position that they have. County Commissioners is an incredibly high calling when you think about separation of powers, when you think about local governments, when you think about checks and balances. The idea is to put the government as close to the people as possible. And I tell folks, you know, as a justice on the court, we'll hear an argument, and it'll be several months later before an opinion comes out. These folks hear different sides of a particular issue, and before they've reached their car, their cellphone has exploded with people on one side or the other trying to bend their ear and trying to influence. Well, it may not be neat and clean, but it's the way that local government is intended to work. And when we have folks like this that have a public spirit, have a sense or a desire to serve the folks of Rowan County, truly, at the end of the day, agree, disagree, I hope all of us can agree on one thing, and that is to thank them for their service. Because I'm sure the, whatever rewards there may be versus the having to deal with whatever folks, you know, because folks feel strong. I don't know if you found this, but folks can feel strongly about issues and can express those issues very strongly. So we do thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Now, the way I like to do an oath, instead of putting somebody on the spot, make them repeat, repeat, I will get you to say your name, and then I will read through the oath. And if you agree to what I say in the oath, if you will say, "I do," or "I do so," help me God. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. State your name. "Fam, we swear that you'll support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as County Commissioner of Rowan County, North Carolina. So help you God." Congratulations. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Did you get one more thing? Thank you for your service. So I love this family's commitment to the history and the, just the patriotism. Greg's much more talented wife is head, or was head, of the DARs. Are you still? Rotate it off that. But still, I was able to come here and do a presentation to the DARs. You had such a wonderful group, and that was a great opportunity there. I've known Greg longer than either one of us probably want to admit, but certainly have always been an admirer and so appreciative of his willingness to be involved in this type of public service and then to be chairman. As I recall, we had court here, and as I recall, your name tag kind of got...
Still have that picture.
What did I do to him? Yeah, anyway.
We have a comic picture.
Probably trying to do my best Greg Ed's imitation, but anyway, you are, no one could imitate you. Wait, it's a privilege to administer an oath, and I can't do it by memory, so hang on a second. Right, left hand, and raise your right hand. "Do you state your name?" "Fam, we swear that you'll support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith. Faithfully discharge the duties of your office as County Commissioner of Rowan County, North Carolina. So help you God."
I do.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Right hand. "Do you state your name?"
Jim Green.
"Fam, we swear that you'll support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith. Faithfully discharge the duties of your office as County Commissioner of Rowan County, North Carolina. So help you God." Congratulations. Thanks you for your willingness.
So, again, we are so honored to have Judge Newby here with us. We wanted to present you with a commissioner's pin, and if you'll allow me to pin this on your robe and make you an honorary commissioner for the day. I know that's above your status currently. But anyway, if that's okay, I'd love to present this. Thank you. Well, thank you. That was quite a privilege. Jay? All right, so we recess for a moment, so now this board will reconvene, and the next item, JD's.
It's a pleasure, at this point in time, to open up the floor for nominations for Chair of the Board of County Commission of Rowan County.
I nominate Greg Eds.
Prove to close the nominations.
There's a second on the motion to close?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the single nominee, then we elect by acclamation Greg Eds to continue as chairman of the Board of the County Commission. Congratulations, Greg, for another term. And now I'll open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
I nominate Jim Green.
Second.
Do I have a motion to close nominations?
Prove to close the nominations.
Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion to close nominations, single nominee, Jim Green, is Vice Chair. Congratulations, Jim, for another term as Vice Chair of the County Commission. With that, you're now back officially. That was fun.
It was fun.
I might get used to it.
Salisbury Post asked us last week how it's going to go today, and we said, "We don't know," because we don't politic for these positions. And so we just see what happens. So I don't have a long speech prepared. Just thank you. We'll maybe have some things to say as we come back into office, but I know I speak, I don't speak for these guys, but in this case, I'm sure I do. We are so grateful to be in the position we are. We're grateful for your votes in May and November. We count this as one of the greatest honors of our lives, and we genuinely want this county to do better and to do well. And we want everyone to do better and well. And just thank you for how you've entrusted us with the things that you've entrusted us with. We are so grateful. Jim, anything?
I'd like to say that I appreciate everybody that is here. I appreciate the support we've had over the last eight years. It's been remarkable that, especially this board, who, we've had few ups and downs. If everybody thought the same way up here, you wouldn't need but one of us. And so I have always appreciated the independent thought that comes from each member of this board, and I appreciate the way that we've been able to work together and get more done in the county than I ever thought we would. And I appreciate the new sheriff being here tonight, our families that are here, some of them for the first time, and it's been a great time. Thank you very much for your support. I'd love to, if we can take that time. Of course, we have so many in my family here, we outnumber y'all. So I guess I didn't have to ask your permission. Oh, I'm allowed. Greg has suggested I might introduce my family. I'll start on the back row back there with... Should I call her Parker? No. That is my son Jimmy. That's his third-in-line daughter, Presley Green. Presley, just stand up a second, so they'll know which one you are. And her mother beside her, Donna, who has given me four grandchildren over the course of time. And the oldest one back there, Hayden Green. And she is a Rowan County schoolteacher, and we appreciate all that she has done for education in Rowan County. The next one I'd like to introduce, in about 15, 20 years, will probably be the next County Commissioner, Mr. Abel Green. Wave out of Abel. My son, who was just newly elected to the Board of Education, Jim Green Jr. And my other son beside him, Mr. Adam Green. Then we start on the front row. These folks are Clarks, and we didn't let them be the last ones to be introduced because of that. But the beautiful lady that was holding the Bible for me is Aniston Clark. And my lovely daughter, Elizabeth Green Clark. And my son-in-law, Ken Clark. Next to me was probably the best athlete in Rowan County, except possibly for his daughter sitting beside him, which is Emma Clark, well-known basketball, softball, volleyball player and sister of Aniston. And my lovely wife of 30-some years, I can't remember exactly, 36, Karen Green. Thank y'all for indulgence.
Well, being from Wisconsin, my family's a long ways away. Actually, we're all over the United States, but I have two sons and three grandchildren. And my oldest son, Charlie, and his wife Amanda live in Fukea, Virginia, North Carolina. And he is a physical therapy assistant, and they have two beautiful girls, Eleanor, who is six, and Abigail, who is three. And they have imaginations that would just take you back. They can do a story from nothing. But then we also have my youngest son, Jim, and his wife Heather, and they live up in Wisconsin. And so does my one and only grandson, Finn, and he's a first grader. And I just love them to death and so, so happy to have them in my life. And then I adopted two foster children this year. They happen to be black and four-legged. So I have two rescues, one from our shelter, whose name is Boone, and the other one is Rufus, and he came from South Carolina. So we got a big family, and boy, are those kids ram motions.
I'd like to introduce my family. First of all, if many of you may not know, in December, my wife and I sold our house, and all of our kids have grown and moved out, so we're downsizing a little. We're building a house right now. In the meantime, we're living with my wife's parents. So if David and Peggy Norris would stand, they are both our landlords and our, my in-laws. So David and Peggy Norris, we appreciate it. The first night we, yeah, the first night we showed up after we had loaded the truck, we showed up with a small bag and a pillow, and about 9:30 at night, knocked on the door, and he opened the door and looked at me, and I said, "Well, you've been expecting this for 34 years now. You just didn't know I'd be with her." And so we've been living there for about a year now, waiting on our home to be built, and we appreciate you opening your lovely home to us and for your patience. My son, Brandon, is here. Brandon, stand. Brandon is the only child of three that stayed here in Rowan County, so my will has been changed, and everything goes to him. Actually, I think my daughter that lives in Sanford, Florida with her husband and son might be watching this, so I'm only kidding, Lauren. I have a daughter, Lauren, just turned 30 last week. We're so proud of her. And Taylor, she lives with her husband and two kids in Huntersville, and we have three grandkids now and a fourth on the way the end of January, and we're just so thrilled. We call this the dividend years. We are just so grateful for how we've been blessed in our family. And then my wife, Kim, if you'll stand. Kim gets to be co-commissioner as well. Thank you. She's, she gets to listen in the middle of the night when the phone calls come. Travis Allen called me at 2:45 in the morning the other night, and so that involves everyone in the room. And so thank you for letting me do what we do. She's my biggest cheerleader and my biggest supporter, and I appreciate you and love you very much. So thank you for letting us do that. With that, we will adjourn until 3:45. That won't be much time, but we've got stuff to do. Wanted to thank Steve, our photographer, for being here with us. He's here every year. If you need any photography needs, see this guy. He's the best. So we appreciate him being here. So we'll recess now until 3:45. Down in the lobby, we have a little reception set up with some food, and then we'll return here at 3:45 to do county business. So thank you very much. All right, we'll call us back in to say... So between 6 and 7, not PM, but the items, 6 and 7. And then we got some... we got something, we're going to add to item number five on our budget amendments. The sheet that you were given from Commissioner Kluzman regarding the visitation station, that'll be added to item five. Does anyone have any other additions or deletions? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Or say aye? All right, let's see. We already approved minutes, didn't we? So do we have a motion to approve the consent agendas amended? All in fa- all in favor? Say aye? Aye. And then anyone for public comment? Was there anyone? I didn't see any either. All right, so let's move on then to special recognition. So commissioners, I've got a Mr. Microphone here. So we're going to go out in front and we're going to recognize a couple of folks. If y'all join me out front. We could have Mr. Bob Pendergrass come up here and join us. Come right here. So if y'all know Bob, first of all, you know, he's just a good guy to begin with. And, but I was talking with Aaron Church, our county manager, before the meeting today and said, Aaron, of all the hires you've done, this is, this has been a good one. And so we appreciate how you've represented the county. We've got Clay is here, and man, we, first few years, man, it was a tough time getting our animal services organized, and he was a big part of helping us do that. And then Bob came along, so thank you. So I wanted to tell you about where Bob came from. I won't tell you where he's going, only he knows that, right? But in, in, on May twenty-fifth of nineteen eighty-nine, Bob came to work for Rowan County as a park attendant. And then less than a year later, March sixteenth, nineteen ninety, Bob became a naturalist. Now, I know y'all think that means nudist, but that's not what that is, and I'm not really sure what a naturalist is, but, but he was. And then five years later, assistant naturalist, part-time. And then again, in, in July of ninety-five, naturalist. And then September one of ninety-six, he was the nature center supervisor. And then March twenty-one of two thousand sixteen, animal services director. And so we've kind of followed Bob along the way. And he just really brought a lot to our animal services department, and that is probably one of the most demanding departments in the entire county. If things aren't going well, then it's one that gets us up at night with calls from New York, from London, from Australia. It's crazy because I'll just leave it at that. It can get crazy. And so we appreciate Bob, how you took all of that off of our shoulders and very, I think in the years since you've been here, since you came in sixteen, I've not gotten really many calls. We've only talked a few times. But really, that has been terrific. So Craig is, is one that really spearheaded the improvements of our animal services department and wanted Craig to make the presentation today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Bob, as you all know, we've had a lot to do out there, and you, you championed up and took care of it between you and Clay. We've made a tremendous difference in all of our animal services. And, and I know you'll be glad when they finally get that building done. It's been out in your front yard now for almost a year. But I can't say enough about you, Bob. You know how much I feel, how, how I feel about you and the job you and all the people out there do. But I'd like to present this plaque to you. It says, to Bob Pendergrass. In recognition and gratitude for thirty-three years of outstanding leadership and exemplary service to the citizens of Rowan County, including more than twenty years as a natural center supervisor and over six years as animal service director. With appreciation for his dedication, enthusiasm, compassion, and vision in providing quality care and facilities for the animals placed under his care in Rowan County parks and animal services. From the Board of Commissioners, this fifth day of December, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'm not going to say much, but I do want to say one thing. I've said a lot of times in my working career that I have the best job in the world. It's going to surprise a few people based on what you heard here, but I did have other jobs. The only time I ever said I had the best job in the world was when I worked for Rowan County. That is because of the people that I get to work with. And a, a great pleasure and an honor to be a public servant and work for the Rowan County government. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
This is another one we're not happy about. We just reject a retirement resi- notice? Oh, yeah. So to those of you who don't know Tanya, Tanya Parnell, we see her loving husband here, who is Chief Parnell for the City of Salisbury. And so if you look at these two, these, these folks really personify what the idea of public service is. And so both of them are really putting out fires all the time. I just came up with that. Was that good? Yeah, it was good. So let me tell you a little bit about her career and what brought her to this point. Nineteen eighty-nine, she was the youngest hired age thirteen in nineteen eighty-nine as, as clerk three here in Rowan County. On January first of ninety-one, she was promoted to accounting clerk two. And then in ninety-five, accounting clerk four. You skipped over three. Well, that's good. And then in ninety-seven, tax collections clerk. And then in July of ninety-eight, a year later, deputy tax collector. They give you a gun then, don't they? Yeah, and then done it, gun and a badge. And October twenty-third of oh-five, assistant tax collector. And August of oh-eight, tax collections manager. And then another great hire bar accounting manager in October of twenty nineteen, tax collector. And so that is from eighty-nine to nineteen, that's thirty years, isn't it? Well, a little bit more, about a month, a month and a half longer than thirty years. It's been a good thirty years for us. We hope it's been a good thirty years for you. And you know, what you do, between you and the tax administrator, really helps our county run. And so we appreciate, you know, we, we don't really talk to you much, do we? And is that a good thing or a bad thing? Well, it's a great thing that we don't, if, if we had problems there, we would talk to you all the time. But by the very virtue that we're not down there in your office all the time means that things are running well. And so we really appreciate that. I don't know what you plan to do in the future, but we, we wish you sincerely all the very best. And thank you for your wonderful years of service here in Rowan County. It's folks like you that make Rowan County home and make Rowan County a better place to live and to invest our time. So thank you, thank you. And Craig's got something for you here.
Oh, I gotta read another one?
Yeah, sure.
I'll put glasses back on.
This is presented to Tanya Parnell in recognition and gratitude for over thirty-three years of exemplary service to the citizens of Rowan County while serving in the tax collector's office for an outstanding leadership during the last three years of service as tax collector. With appreciation for her dedication and guidance in preserving the integrity of the office throughout the faithful discharge of her duties, Rowan County Commissioners, on this fifth day of December twenty-two, would like to present you with this plaque.
Thank you.
It has been an exciting thirty-some years. I have enjoyed every minute of it. I appreciate the opportunities that have been isn't that we've not had to talk with the commissioners is because staff, and we can handle it, and the staff will move on.
All right, well, we always enjoy the celebration and it's a sweet time and a sad time at the same time because Rowan County is losing, at least from an employment standpoint, to our very best. So Godspeed to both of you. And we wish you great health and a long, 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 happy retirement. Okay? All right, we'll move on to item number three. And Shane, welcome Shane. Our Assistant Planning Director.
The board has heard a couple of times in the past, at least they've shared with staff, the interest in looking at our SNA process.
Is that mic on?
Yes, it is. It must be.
Yep, it's on. All right, go.
Okay, I'll just speak louder. So with the, with the process we've had since nineteen ninety-four, the current standards still remain the same. So staff, one of the things that we looked at was to consider our current ordinance language and also some land use plan recommendations for the board to consider with any of these designations. So to start with, let's go a little, for a little background. So the reason we have this standard and many others within the ordinance dealing with the watershed, it's a mandate from the state. It stems from nineteen eighty-nine through the General Assembly and their work to recognize the need and direct the emergency management commission or environmental management commission for identifying watershed boundaries, standards within those watersheds, and regulations that would primarily just to address the protection of drinking water sources throughout the state. So there's quite a few. See if I can maximize this. Yeah. So you see Rowan County here in the middle. We have a lot within the eighty-five and forty quarter, but much less out towards the, the east. But we'll touch on our local watersheds here, but they're designations ranging from one to four, and those classifications for SNA purposes change dramatically in those red areas. It does not allow for applications there. So the primary development standards, if you want to think of a watershed rule, would be how many homes can you have per acre? And for non-residential use is the built-upon area limitations. How much impervious coverage based on the percentage of your lot? So moving into the specific local watersheds, anything that you see in red is a either current or former or potential water intake location. One of the best examples up here, Salisbury SRU water intake here near Hannah Ferry Road. The Yadkin River watershed is based off a distance from this source, and you see a buffer here. And then in the watershed twos, we have a couple of different drinking water source. One here off eight oh-one, there's one at Lake Wright. These are two different watersheds. And you'll see in the acreage, there's difference from the total boundary from Back Creek, Sloane Creek, Lake Wright, Cottle Creek. It, Cottle Creek goes with one fifty-two. Also, our watersheds go beyond the map that you see here, and they can spill over into Iredale County. They, Cottle Creek even goes into Mecklenburg, Iredale, and Cabarrus. So we're charged just with what's in our jurisdiction. So here are the watershed areas, and to correspond with each watershed name in the classification, we were given an original watershed boundary in terms of acreage. To not get into, I guess, how the sausage is prepared, these are conservative figures that we provided from the original acreage given to changes in the county line to different acreages and GIS systems to a different map that we adopted that was accepted to the state that's contour-based versus ones with roads. So rest assured, these are figures that correspond with those, and also we do adjust for not included municipal areas. Doesn't mean they get it, but we do make adjustments for that in case we ever need to reassess. And one of the reasons I think we, it's important to do that, for the most part, we're not pushed with our numbers yet. We have lots available. And of course, there are some where it's getting a little bit closer or don't have a lot. For example, the north branch of Lake Wright, there's only a small percentage that can be allocated. So from our total watershed area in the SNA designations, as the board knows, we can take out ten percent of the total acreage in a watershed. Let's go back to Back Creek, Sloane Creek, Cottle Creek, even though both watershed twos, they're separate. So they have separate acreages. Ten percent of the watersheds, we have an, a acreage that can be removed per our process. This spreadsheet also identifies areas we've already removed some and the associated parcel numbers. Coldwater Creek, even though it's in the county, it's all in Kannapolis, so we don't even recognize any allocation there. And depending on how you want to look at that, this percentage here is based off the ten percent allowance. You can take out, I've got other spreadsheets that the board sees that I use it based on a hundred percent. How much can we allocate based on our hundred percent allotment? This is the ten percent. So if you see one point three-six, that means of our ten percent. So we can only have eight point six-four percent left. So that is these two figures taken into account from that ten percent. We can revisit this if we need to, but this is, gives you a snapshot of that, and then we'll see when we get into the land use plan recommendations, how that relates back to the various development pressures for different watersheds, the amount of our ten percent. And then again, for Lake Wright being that there's only sixty acres that can be removed, period. I think that, that's pressing when we look at the recommendations. This is a quick snapshot of our current density allowances. Watershed for a single family is based on a lot size. Forty thousand is about an acre, twenty thousand, half acre. There's very limited area of watershed two critical. So this is what we're focusing on in the SNA process. For example, in the watershed two balance, twelve percent of the project can be covered with a built-upon area. And that's going to be a rooftop, a paved road. And that's going to be a rooftop, a paved road, concrete, asphalt. It can be gravel if it's a certain type of gravel. There's a specific allowance where it's not considered built upon area. And we've encouraged folks to use that when it's, you know, works and suits their needs. Our current standards are as such on the screen here. We have a few, number one, four and five that are, are very basic. They come from the, the state model. So we ask for currently a site plan and the board can include reasonable and appropriate conditions. There's not much more guidance in our process now. Hence the, the reason the board mentioned, hey, let's, let's take a look at these standards and see what we can amend. Let's go through a few examples. Y'all have seen a lot of these, but still for what it's worth and also to build a little context, I think will be helpful when we go through these examples. So here's one in the watershed two balance, twelve percent's allowed. Lot size is one point eight four acres. So administrative allowance through staff is a site plan that comes in that we review. Zone appropriately, you can do X and that would be the twelve percent or less. For this site's ninety-six hundred and eighteen square foot. It's not a lot on nearly two acres. From there, this is example, it's not quite twelve percent, but you'll see in the next slide what that represents. But this is a proportion area that's about ten percent of the overall size of that lot. And it matches a area, it's whatever's outside of the ride away. This is a, a concrete paved area, a portion of a building. And that's the ten percent. So under twelve percent, don't have to come to the board, don't have to use our allocation. It's all at the staff level. And this is for the West Rowan Fire Department. They wanted a little bit more. They wanted this section here and they had some operational needs. And you see from the previous slide in that blue area, if you can make it out, that's without this process, that's what they would have been allowed to do. So they would have neither needed more land or this process or something you'll hear in the next presentation, a different type application. So collectively, this represents thirty percent. Board approved SNA oh two oh nine and now we take the one point eight four acres out of our watershed total and they're allowed to go between thirteen percent, which is just over the administrative allowance, all the way up to seventy. And that's key. When you're removing the acreage, you remove it all. You take out the acreage and you're allowed between thirteen and seventy. So this was given for a, you know, public use, fire department.
You said you're, you take it, you're taking out all of it.
You take the
Overage?
You take out the acreage, the entire parcel.
So not just the overage?
Correct. We're removing this whole parcel from that allocation. So in doing so, you're choosing to also look at the percentage. How much do they need? Do they need thirteen percent? Do they need sixty-five percent? And in doing so, if it's a very large tract, you might want to consider in that designation to be, you know, is there another option for them? Can they reduce their building footprint? Or, you know, gravel areas or use gravel that's considered non-pervious. So some of those things in mind or a different option, maybe density averaging, which we'll hear about next. Here's another example. This site here is about nine acres. It's located in the same type watershed, a two balance, twelve percent's allowed. That's only a little over an acre. In the seventy percent, it allows six point three acres. Board approved in ninety-nine this request and it allowed the proposed site plan, which was about five acres of impervious coverage. So when you map all these blue areas, then that, that allotment removed, took out nine acres and allowed them for this development to, to build on that much. Keep this example in mind when we look at the land use plan recommendations. So in the ordinance changes, just a real quick summary, unless the board and I, I doubt you do, want me to go through all the different bullet points of the text, I was going to hit a real quick summary of everything. So the purpose of this ordinance change, right now we have what I would term an administrative review. This board has legislative authority to make law, quasi judicial authority to have special use permits where you're a fact finder. The third type of decision that a board would make or staff in this case would make is what's termed administrative. You get a request, you, you review it based on the criteria and approve or deny. So the change goes from an administrative review to what staff proposed as conditional zone. SNIs are not a, a given right. They're a request, so therefore it can be a conditional district. So all of these areas that we saw on the map are part of the watershed overlay. So this would be a amendment to the watershed overlay to allow this type of option. It would be just like a rezoning. In one of the requests that we heard most recently, there's a lot of folks that they'd like to participate in the process. They're not part of it because this does not require notice. So now we'll have the planning board review it. Staff would be sending letters out for both meetings, planning board and this board. And then you'll have a statement process and the whole shebang. So I think that transition and the reason being, the only other option you'd have is a special use permit. And you get into the quasi judicial nature of everything and I think we know how the advantages and disadvantages of that. As far as our purpose statement, I think being that although this is a, a development limitation, it's also a resource, if you want to call it that. It's, it's something that the board's looking at and how do you determine the, you know, who gets it and who don't and you know, what type of, what do they need to bring? So advance the public interest, a generic reference in the, the ordinance. So we've got tax base, employment. Maybe it's for that public use like a fire department. Maybe they're treated differently than someone that just needs thirteen percent for a two thousand square foot home occupation. But the other benefits are that the catchall can be approved by the board if, you know, that there's some other need that is evident. Eligibility has not changed. It remains the same. It's for non-residential use only, cannot be used in a critical area and no other changes are proposed in the text. If a SNA was approved in nineteen ninety-four, all the way up till last week, that, there's no requirement that the board would have to rehear the request in this capacity. It still remains as an approved. It's already been removed in the allocation, so no changes are proposed there. Staff would still be the ones that review an amendment. If, let's say the plan called for fifty percent impervious and they want to add more, well, the board's already approved the allocation so we can at the staff level approve the rest. It's already been removed. And then the last bullet point would be if this, whenever this is approved, if it is, then the next application that comes through is a different approach. So if the board receives a request, you approve it and for some reason they decide to build a much smaller building. Then if it meets the cutoff here, that exceed the greater of five thousand square feet or twenty-five percent of the overall amount, then it can remain at the staff level. So that's all built in the ordinance and we can go through those points if, if the board would like. I've got it all as part of this. Any questions about the text part? And if not, I'll go into the land use plan recommendations. So the first part, and again, this is the public hearing for both the text and the amendments for the east and west specific for our SNA designations. This is a little background of, of why we're introducing this. I think up here is the justification also in the, the parameters. If, if an application does not meet one of these standards, much like when we looked at the solar applications here year and a half ago. You know, one, one negative mark doesn't mean it's not approved. But it's the overall consideration of the entire application and the whole recommendations in the, the land use plan. So these are general recommendations and we start with each watershed and a maximum acreage that should be removed. Every request is going to be different. So
Is this total or at a time?
Per parcel. So if you have a tract and it's a hundred acres and it's in Cottle Creek, that's a big hit. So that don't mean that the board can't approve it. It just means they, at this point, and not to go totally off topic, the only other option folks have is outside of density averaging that you'll hear next would be if the county had a change in position and wanted to allow, and at some point we'll probably have to get there, stormwater ponds. But right now to effectively manage these all over the whole county without proper staffing, that would be difficult. But again, well, this could always be revisited, but for right now with the amount that we do have, I feel like this is a good starting point. And it reflects for Yadkin River, it's a very large watershed, so five is the max. Tucker Town's smaller, but probably not going to receive a lot of pressure out that way. And these, these are very small watersheds, except Coldwater Creek's a little bit larger. But that one is where Kannapolis annexed and you got China Grove influence right there. So those were adjusted for those factors. So the first bullet point here, which we talked, touched on earlier, the tax base job creation is reasonably proportionate to the request. And most things might create one job, but you know, is it proportionate to how much is being removed? And then if it removes a significant acreage in either A or B, which I've got two scenarios here. The first one is going back to that same example of our twelve percent. If they need a small amount and we're removing it for, you know, the, in this example, twenty percent, is that the best way to utilize the allocation? Should they make some other adjustments in their site plan, the use of gravel, do density averaging or some other measure? In B, this would be as in the second example where you have a nine acre lot. Let's say it's primarily developed and they need maybe a modest improvement, a small building. But in order to do that, you have to remove all nine acres because much of it predated the watershed rules, but you got to remove it all just to get that small benefit. It's just something to consider. Doesn't mean that it is not approved. It's just how do you properly approve each request? Or consider those that they need another option to consider. Rural home occupations generally not preferred. The maximum building there is twelve thousand square feet, but we might not want to consider each of those. Maybe the board does, but it's, it's a starting point. Also public purpose, semi-public purpose, like a church, civic organization, maybe even, I mean, this applies to utilities for Duke Energy, a substation. Anything that's going to have gravel on the ground or that's, you know, at least meets the pervious standards and concrete, anything like that, you have these pop up. So the last one we heard, what, two months ago, they're using the fifty-seven stone that's not considered built upon. Comply with all of the land use plan recommendations. Next point, when considering the request, what about our capital improvement plan? Is there any potential schools that need to locate in a certain area where we, at that point, we note them and set that aside for future allocation? It, it's more of a consideration. Well, how much do we got? What's our future needs when we're balancing out each, each request? And then lastly, consider any undeveloped already zoned areas in that watershed. It might be conducive for that type of request. And then the bottom two, the west area and east area, both, well, the, the west would be for community and regional node within a two. The east is just, there's community nodes within, within watershed areas there that maybe they do exceed that minimum, maximum acreage. If they meet all other plan recommendations. Second bullet point under the west would be designations within existing commercial industrial parks. Out one fifty-two at the western park, there's a lot of available lots in the four or five different industrial parks we have. So those are generally encouraged. And then around High Rock Lake for retail and service needs. It's kind of an earmark there and plug for them. So the planning board did recommend approval unanimously. They offered a statement of consistency, which is in your packet. And so the board does need to adopt the statement also to recognize that, again, this is both the ZTA oh five two two and the land use plan recommendations. So we can approve, deny or table the request. One thing I do want to point out real quick on page twenty-four here. This was one amendment that is not in your packet. The previous text right here is a previously approved SNA request prior to this date or whatever date, if the board does choose to adopt it at next month. Then there's a reference in here to anything approved within two years. That's been removed. And just goes request approved by the board prior to X date that either were or will be developed consistent with the approved plan. So that part where you see in your packet, the, within two years of approval, that's being removed. Any questions?
Any immediate questions for Shane and then I'll make a quick statement. So this is a, this is a big change. And we appreciate, as always, our planning staff for their technical expertise. A lot of times it takes us some time to, to kind of consume this. Talked with Shane today and asked him if he was okay and I've checked with the other commissioners. It, just a, as a request of, of me right now, is there anyone here that is going to want to speak during public comment about this, this new change? And Jay, I'll probably need your help on what to do. I think the intent of this board at this point is to table this item until mid-January where we can have folks that'll attend our six PM meeting in case there's just a lot of folks have a hard time getting here at three o'clock. So this will give folks that want to comment on this an opportunity to speak at a six PM meeting. So if there's no one here that wants to speak now, could we just table it at this point and then take up a public comment period in January?
We can table it and, and I guess one question, so we don't have to advertise it again, I would suggest we open the public hearing and then not close the public hearing and then table the matter with the public hearing open until the next meeting.
Good.
Unless, unless there's a reason that we need to publish another hearing to make sure people know, that's up to the board. If you want us to publish another hearing, we will, but.
I'd kind of, I'd kind of like for us to.
I think we need to.
Okay, then, then we can just table it and, and Okay, then, then we can just table it and, and direct staff to run a new notice for a public hearing for the second meeting in January.
Okay.
Is that all right Shane?
Yeah. Craig, do you have a motion?
Make a motion to table ZTA 0522 until the second meeting in January.
All right. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Shane, thank you. It'll give us an opportunity also to digest this and get, get with you individually on questions we may have. Aaron, welcome. You know where this is going, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, this. All right, so now we have ZTA 0422 for density averaging. So this is an amendment to the zoning and subdivision ordinances to add density averaging for watershed overlay districts. So what is density averaging? Density averaging allows for two non-contiguous parcels to be treated as one single parcel to meet the built-upon area slash density requirements of the water supply watershed they're located. Density averaging is a process only allowed for non-residential development and local governments are required to allow for density averaging. So just kind of.
So will you stop right there? Local governments required to allow density averaging? Is there something that has brought us to this conversation now?
So there's, there's been a few communities, local communities nearby that have had requests for density averaging. And without having specific language in our ordinance, we have to go by the state minimums in the watershed statutes. So we're kind of trying to jump ahead of the game here and make sure we have something in place for our own developmental needs before somebody tries to request that from the county.
Okay, so, okay. But we've not had a policy that allowed density averaging in the past, right?
Right.
So we have to do that, and that's why we're doing this.
Right. We have to have some sort of, we have to offer density averaging. So by adopting an amendment to our zoning ordinance and subdivision, we can have our own specific requirements for density averaging.
Make sure the public understood.
All right, now, you talked about having two lots that were not contiguous and bringing them together to get the average.
Right.
So will that affect what we're trying to do here? Or is that usually consistent among all the, all the counties using it that way? Instead of one lot having to stand on its own and then the other lot having to get zoned and requested.
So I'll dive into a little bit of more detail, a little bit further down, but essentially the way it will work is, I'll just move into the next slide here, is that you got two properties. So the first property is the donating property. So you'll have one property that's not developed. So in this case, you have a donating property that'll be placed in a conservation easement or some sort of covenants on the deed to prevent development on that property. And then it's built-upon area allotment will get transferred over to the receiving property, which will allow it to develop greater than it normally can on its own. And I got some, some examples here coming up that'll kind of paint that picture for us. But with that process, so you have the two different lots, you have the donating property that's giving its development rights up and a receiving property that's gaining those development rights. And then together, they still meet the overall density requirement for that watershed, but only the one property is getting developed and it is essentially getting developed more than it could by itself.
Does the donating property have to be in the same watershed or does it have to be in a watershed at all?
The donating property will have to be in the same watershed as the one that's receiving it. So in our first example here, we got two lots, they're going to be in the same watershed. And a developer's wanting to do a 15,000 square foot development on property one. So in this watershed to do 15,000 square foot development, you need three acres. And in this case, property one is only one acre, so it's too small to do 15,000 square feet. So what this developer does is they found property two somewhere else in the watershed. And property two is two acres, so it allows for 10,000 square feet. Now, still whether one of these are big enough to do their 15,000 square foot development, but when you average their densities together, they can do the total 15,000 that they want. So that would look like this. So in this, in this scenario, property one is the receiving property. And it's received all the development that's allowed on property two to be transferred over to it. So property one is now a one acre lot with 15,000 square feet built upon. And property two is now a two acre lot with no development allowed on it at all. It's been placed in a preservation easement or, or conservation easement, and that runs in perpetuity.
All right. If they are not contiguous lots.
Right.
Are we creating a problem at lot one?
So.
Filing this?
So lot one is allowed to do this and because of the density averaging. So it's tied together through this process with lot two. So together they meet the standards. And we're protecting this because the overall watershed density stayed the same. We're still developing three acres, but this two acres here won't be touched at all and will stay completely clean, so it won't ever have built-upon area. Which that's what's allowed property one to get that increased acreage or the increased built-upon area.
Does property two have to be owned by the same party? Or can those future development rights be purchased by the owner of lot one from a third party?
They do not have to be the same people. So the person who owns property one could go to the owner of property two and offer to buy off their development rights and place them in that easement. And then they don't themselves have to own property two.
That'd be attached to the deed of property two?
There'll be a recorded plant and it'll be some sort of deed attachment with that deed. All right. So we'll move on to the second example here. So in this example, we have an already developed lot. This is a 10 acre lot and a 10 acre lot in this watershed, you can do 50,000 square feet. Now, they've already built on this lot 40,000 square feet, but they want a 30,000 square foot expansion. So that requires getting another 20,000 square feet of built-upon area from somewhere else in the watershed. So in this example, they found another property, it's four acres. And a four acre property has the 20,000 square feet of built-upon area that they need. And so they placed property two at a perpetual easement so that it can no longer be developed. And they transfer that 20,000 over to property one. So in this situation, property two, just like in the first example, can't be built upon. And property one gets that benefit of building more than they could otherwise. But most likely, there's not always going to be the perfect parts sitting out there. So I got two B. So in this example, it's the same 10 acres lot as we're starting with, but they found an eight acre part, property. So an acre property can build 40,000 square feet. The developer of property one doesn't need the full 30, the full 40,000 square feet of built-upon area. So what they do is they can actually split that lot in half. And now property two's been split into two A, which is free and clear. It can still be built upon up to 20,000 square feet. But then two B here has been placed in that conservation or preservation easement and can no longer be developed. So two B sends its development rights over to the first property, while two A is allowed to stay and be developed in the future if they'd like to. Before we move on to the next ones, are there any things you want to take a look at with example two? All right. So the third example here, this one is more of a, this is using some real life properties to make a, make an example. So in this scenario, we have property one here, it's a 3.3, 3.73 acre property. This is in the Performance Park off of Wilkinson Road. And the developer wants to do 100,000 square feet of development. But this property only allows for 19,340 square feet in built-upon area. So they need to get a little bit less than 81,000 square feet of rights from somewhere. When you do the math, that turns into them needing about 15.4 acres of another property in that watershed to cover the difference. So just for reference here, 100 square, 1,000 square feet on that property is a little bit more than 60% of the property here. And it's pretty in line with what kind of development we would expect out there. So property two here, this is also in the same watershed. Just like in example two, this is not a perfect parcel. They've, this is a 30, 34.16 acre parcel, so they don't need the entire property to do their density averaging. So what they will do is they take 15.5 acres in this red hashed area and they use that for their conservation easement. This 15.5 acres gives the 81,000 square feet necessary to do the project back in the Performance Park. And it's something to keep in mind with that, is that with the conservation easement, that prevents development on that lot. But as you can see here, they're using this as some sort of crop field or hayfield, and that's allowed to continue under that easement. So if this person farms the property, wants to sell the rights to that property, to that developer in the park, they can continue to use that as a farm. And the developer back in the park can use that, that built-upon area coverage to meet their requirement. So this next slide here, this is just a scale to kind of show how quickly that can kind of build up. So to develop this 100,000 square feet, all this area here required the total area of the lot it was on, along with all this area from this property over there. So that, it just kind of shows how quickly 12% can scale to meet things, the low density requirement in the watershed. Then the last thing I want to show with this is just to kind of demonstrate. Yes?
Could we add any more requirements? The property that they're actually building on? If they're building larger buildings than, than we expected or is allowable, allowable by the state, is flooding or water accumulation more likely at that site?
So they would have to design their sites for that. There's some information in there and some of the requirements for the sites that require the sheet flow to meet specific standards by a professional engineer. And we could take a look at those specific standards if you like to, but there were requirements in the, the state's model ordinance that address that.
Good.
So the last thing I kind of want to show here is just to kind of give an example about how they're non-contiguous properties. So these two properties, they're both in the same watershed. This is the Cottle Creek watershed. They're about 2.2 miles in the air from each other, but by car, it's about five and a half miles. So that really goes to show that they're in the same watershed, but realistically, they don't have any kind of association with each other other than getting paired together through the density averaging process. All right. Well, that's the last of the examples I have for y'all. So if y'all have any more questions before we can move on, I'll show you what the changes to the ordinance entail. So these are the sections of the ordinance that are getting changed. So the first section, 21-4, that's the definitions. That's just adding definitions for density averaging, donating property and receiving property. Section 2133, overlay districts, that's the bulk of the text amendment. And that's adding this new section here, 21332F4, which lays out the density averaging process, what properties are eligible, what's required to meet those eligibility requirements and the purpose and intent of density averaging. And some, some of the specifics of that, the purpose and intent of that is to give another method of compliance for increasing density on a lot. So like the high density standards with stormwater, or if you were doing an SNI A permit, this would be another option that developers would have to exceed the general built-upon area requirements in the watershed district. Then section 21311, actually, I'm going to back up, say a couple more things about the eligibility. Lots that would be eligible, they would have to be within the county zoning jurisdiction. So any lots that were within city limits or town limits, even if they were in the same watershed, they wouldn't be eligible to apply for this. So then we can move on to 21311 Board of Commissioners.
I'm sorry, can you go back to that last one you were explaining? I'm not sure I quite got it.
Yeah, so with this process, this would only be applicable to properties inside the county zoning jurisdiction.
Okay. It's county zoning jurisdiction.
Right.
But our whole county is considered to be zoned, correct?
So only what's outside of the municipal limits and their ETJs. So if somebody had a property in like Kannapolis or something like that, that was in one of our watersheds, they couldn't density average area in the county to build inside the city of Kannapolis.
Okay, okay. But it wouldn't be like China Grove? Would that be the same then or?
Right. So like China Grove, they, China Grove couldn't have somebody place a property in the county in an easement to then use that area in their watershed area.
Okay, thank you.
Then section 21311 Board of Commissioners, that's just a, it adds on the Board of Commissioners as the watershed review board. So essentially it means that this board here will be the ones reviewing these applications. 21318, density averaging permit application. So that's just a new section of the ordinance that lays out the proper, the procedures for density averaging. And the way we have density averaging laid out is it'll work as a special use permit. So they'll, so an applicant would come to staff. They fill out an application, submit supporting documents, so things like a site plan, deed, proposed deed restrictions, their map, their plaits for where it's going to be the donating property and the receiving property. They would submit all that to staff. They would review that application to make sure that it's complete. And then on review, that it's been completed properly, it would then move on to this board here to have a special, to have a quasi judicial hearing. So just like with a special use permit, it'd be a quasi judicial hearing, there'd be findings of fact, and then the commission would approve, deny, or table the request. And then the last thing here is just a new certificate that would go on plaits. So any plant that was going to have a donating or receiving property on it, would have a certificate, have a certificate on it that said the date that it was approved by the Board of Commissioners and the permit number. So those are all the different proposed changes to the ordinances. If there's any specific ones we want to look at, I have everything prepared that we can take a deeper dive if we want to. The planning board back in October adopted the statement, the following statement here. And then just a couple of comments, this is something that's mandated by the state. And without adopting our own specific standards, we would revert to state minimums. This text amendment has a few standards that exceed the state minimums. And these higher standards are mostly there to help keep in compliance with the watershed over, watershed program. And then it's important to consider that donating properties must remain in an undeveloped state in perpetuity. And that density averaging standards and land use plan recommendations should take that into account. And then for procedures, conduct a hearing, adopt statements, and then we would approve, deny, or table the request.
I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
The first one is the the price, is it just whatever the market bears as far as if you're going to buy someone's rights from, from their property?
Right. Somebody would, they would go up to maybe a farmer or somebody who had some undeveloped vacant land and just say, I'll, I'll buy this off of you for so much money. And then they would kind of go along in the process with them to, you know, sign off on the deeds, acknowledging that they've put that under an easement.
And, and if, so if you have a piece of property and they sell the rights from that piece of property, how does that affect the tax value of that property?
I don't have the answer to that question. I'm not sure how that would affect. I'm not sure how that would affect tax value if they sold the development rights to it.
Property less valuable, I guess. Yeah, I mean, the property be less valuable if you sold off the, uh, SNI A rights from it or his watershed rights.
Yeah, it's, it, yeah, it's like a conservation easement. When you restrict development, you, you lower the, the value, um, of the property. Specifically with regard to how that's then taxed, it's taxed subject to the conservation easement and a different value. So yes, there is a corresponding tax impact on the value.
So, so there's al- already conservation easements out there?
We, we, yes. Um, we have conservation easement all over Rowan County for a lot of different purposes. Um, this is just sort of a new identified purpose that people can do it. It operates like there are wetlands credits out there that you can take property that, that's in wetlands right now. And you can protect those wetlands and sell those credits to the department of transportation. So they can rip up wetlands and build a road through it. Um, it, it works a lot the same way.
So they can't.
It's interesting from a tax standpoint, there's a corresponding increase in value if you can now develop property at a higher density. There's a corresponding value increase over there.
So if there's no one, so if they're already in an easement or a easement somewhere, then they can't go back now and sell rights because they're already in an easement.
Have to have something tangible to give away.
And, um, so under this, is there any scenario where a developer could just go around and buy up all the rights without building and then own all the rights to? You know, if you had a farm, somebody who had five hundred acres and they bought five hundred acres worth of rights from them and they just owned it and set on it.
So, right, uh, right, before they could actually buy those rights, before that could go into effect. They would have to apply for, through this process. So if there wasn't already a corresponding development to do that with, they wouldn't be able to.
So, but this will be done through a quasi judicial hearing, is that right? So they have to actually have, uh, we'd have to have some sort of evidence of why not to do it, I guess. So not just, we don't want to do it.
We, we would have the same standard you applied to a zoning case, that's a quasi judicial case. We would have standards that you would have to check off and make findings of fact to grant or deny.
Right.
It'd be the same if, uh, if somebody from a different county came in and wanted to buy the rights. And take that across county lines. We would, it's my understanding that we would still have to approve that, wouldn't, under this.
Right, under this, if they wanted to use that for density averaging purposes, they would need to come and apply through the board here. And if there wasn't a corresponding property in Rowan Ca- and our zoning district it was going to, that wouldn't meet our standards for approval.
And that's been the question before with regard to transferability in or out of county is under this program, it'd be restricted to Rowan County.
And just like other conservation easements, that's for perpetuity, correct?
That's correct.
So it's a good way to preserve.
Aaron, let me ask you a question. It says here on twenty-one dash three eleven that the board of commissioners establishes a watershed review board. Does that give the watershed review board the authority to, uh, make that decision or does that have to come back to the commissioners?
So the way that it's worded in the state statutes is that it says that a special use permit or other such permit must be approved by the watershed review board. Or by the, uh, board of adjustment. And so we're in this, uh, twenty-one three eleven, it's establishing y'all as the review board for that. So it gives, so that's what gives y'all the authority to act on it.
The watershed, right.
Right.
Okay, just want to make sure we're not adding another board like the planning board. Nothing wrong with the planning board, don't get me wrong, but I'm just saying that we're not adding another layer of, 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 of things that people have to go through to get what they need is what I was asking.
Yeah, this would be like a special use permit after staff review would go straight to y'all.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, then I think we're gonna take.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Right, we'll see you then. Thank y'all.
Yeah, he's ba- he's behind a podium, you can't even see him.
All right, uh, do we have a motion to approve the budget amendments?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go through some board appointments.
Oh, moved.
All in favor, say aye. Uh, our NPO, uh, Mike.
So moved.
Okay.
Aye. So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kind of granted core to ZVA.
So moved.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All forward commissioner.
Move, say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
JCPC, the following individual stat.
Wait, got one more, Crystal Rios. So moved.
Okay. Aye.
Local emergency planning.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Planning board, four seats, uh.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
TDA commissioner Pierce.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we've got some. Us East Gold Hill.
Yep.
Michael David.
Uncle Rural is Kinsey over.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, you'll need to stop right there because South Salisbury Volunteer Fire Department, both candidates, we have to waive term limits. So moved.
Say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A union, I should have, you.
Do we go ahead and do South Salisbury?
Yeah, we did.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion, go up.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Union volunteer.
Yeah, everything else is good.
Artie Watson and Joe.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, a second.
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Soon as we get the door.
All right, uh, make a motion, we come out a closed session. Second, all in favor, say aye. All right, we've got a couple of motions to make. We have interviewed and made it, made a, uh, offer to Ms. Sarah Pack. Um, to be the new Rowan County, uh, clerk to the board of commissioners effective twelve nineteen at the pay of sixty-eight thousand dollars. I'll make that in form of a motion, we have a se- second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've also, uh, discussed, uh, adding a position of deputy clerk to the board. That is at grade twelve, I make a motion that we create deputy clerk to the board, grade twelve, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, um, we also would like, uh, to make a motion, uh, that we provide for Siobhan. Um, because, uh, she has some responsibilities, uh, in the transition of, of, uh, training in, being trained and training. Uh, with our upcoming, uh, new clerk to the board. And so we would like to do a one-time, uh, bonus to, uh, to Siobhan for two thousand dollars and make that in the form of a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, um, so we are not, we're just recessing, right? Yep, we're just gonna recess until six, we'll reconvene at six. All right, uh, we'll, we'll come back, uh, into session and we're gonna continue with our next item with Shane. Public hearing for Z O nine dash two-two, Shane, welcome. Thank you for coming back.
Thank you for hanging around. All right, so, um, this request here is for the RP Salisbury Partners rezoning application. Um, on land owned by Charles Holmberger and the DNA Properties LLC. Looking at the map, you see a little over a hundred acre area outlined in yellow for the subject rezoning site. And we'll look at the, the segments here in a minute, but the property fronts on the twelve hundred block of Web Road. And also on this frontage road back here, Lane Parkway, which extends off of Peeler Road. So you see the property here, butts eighty-five on one portion, but, uh, this is the subject boundary here we're gonna speak of. And there's five segments I want to point out here as far as the overall zoning boundary. And the gray color that you see and then the diagonal lines, that represents rural agriculture with an agricultural overlay. And the Holmberger property is, does have that ag overlay. So the request would be for number one here and four would go to CBI CD for a conditional district. Along with number three, which is currently zone industrial in the purple owned by DNA properties. That segment would also be CBI CD for development plan that we'll see shortly. Number five is owned by Mr. Holmberger, it would go CBI straight to match this red area here, it's got a couple houses on it. And up here at two, this is the Holmberger property, would go to industrial to match up and be joined with DNA properties here as a straight rezoning. And again, that totals around a hundred acres. The conditional district element of this request would be for a one and a quarter million square foot. Development proposal consisting of two buildings, which you see here in the, uh, salmon color. One of the primary improvements associated with this is a continuation. Right now, Lane Parkway ends at, uh, development used to be CCI environmental. But per the request, this CBI CD zone would come through this area in red and continue all the way down. And connect back to Web Road as a new public right of way with a two lane road and some segments, three for a turn lane for this facility. You see in the upper right-hand corner, a little cross section. And you also have public sewer that comes just under eighty-five here. And would be extended over right now by an adjacent development that was Salisbury Satellite Annexation. But that extension over here would be, uh, also to serve these properties here as well. Couple of the things to point out, the conditional district would be specific for construction, manufacturing, transportation and wholesale trade uses. That you have a list of allowed uses, a table in your, um, packet we'll look at here shortly. But it's only for those allowed uses and it mirrors the CBI district currently. We also have as part of this, what we term a multi-tenant development plan. There's, there's not a specific layout of how many tenant spaces, but this board does review any site plan for a multi-tenant connection. So the developer's asking for that allowance and flexibility to potentially, I think the big building would likely be either one user or two. And this smaller building would be, uh, uh, two or three, maybe even four on that. So that request does include it as well. The little blue areas you see represent stormwater ponds required by the state. We are within the phase two stormwater area. Let's take a little bit closer look and we're gonna go north to south. Here's the end of Lane Parkway that runs into actually called Mainlining America now, it used to be CCI Environmental. So you see that one acre CBI CD rezoned area of the DNA properties, the road continuing through. This is about five and a third acres industrial going back to DNA properties. Both of these two segments will be combined into the whole of the two respective tracks to not be standalone orphaned tracks. As we continue down Lane Parkway on the new build, you go to the first small little stream crossing. That's where the sewer comes through, building two, about a third of a million square feet. Over here to your far right is the, the Petrick property that was sold and now is part of that Salisbury Satellite Annexation. That area is zone light industrial, it's currently under mobilization now for land disturbing activities for that project. Continuing down, this is building one, little over nine hundred thousand square feet. On the far left of the image here, it will have a twenty-foot buffer. There's a couple houses over here within a couple, I think, two hundred feet or so. So that would trigger the type A buffer standard. Now on the far, in the, the southeast corner, you'll see a, a site plan snippet here that's gonna be slightly revised on the developer's proposal. They do extend the buffer over a little bit more. There's a couple houses in, uh, joining land here that is proximate to this drive that will have not just the standard type A buffer. Have a fifty-foot sec- section, it will be undeveloped and have those evergreens. That's represented by this yellow area, which we'll see shortly, has been extended over just slightly. Part of that's due to either a statement made at the planning board level or a planning board member statement to the applicant. As we continue down the connection back to Web Road, there were the two stormwater ponds mentioned, along with the other one to the north. Uh, extension through a small wetland area here back to the twelve hundred block. This portion is part of the conditional district. This fi- uh, fifty thousand square foot area has got two houses. It would go back to a similar zone or the same zone here to the west as CBI. It's hard to see for you, but in your packet, you should have a more clear version. This is our conditional district allowed uses, CBI CD. Here's the offerings, see the construction trade sector, a few manufacturing. And probably the, the transportation and logistics warehousing sections, most likely what we'll see there and wholesale trade. It's a simple comparison as we do with any reason. Simple comparison as we do with any rezoning request. It's easy when you look at the, the agriculture overlay. It doesn't permit anything other than family subdivisions and farming operations. Industrial is fairly wide open and then you see the CBI CD is only for the requested uses. Our land use plan has several recommendations for consideration and the first of which you see the purple color here, which represents a significant area of existing commercial industrial areas. So this request would be in compliance with the plan recommendations there for those purple areas. And also this crosshatch area and this purple line here represents the eighty five quarter. And within that quarter, it equally does encourage this type of application here too in development. Third bullet point is pretty straightforward. They're using water and sewer and extending that along with the adjacent development further to the east on Web and Peeler. Fourth point, I think that one and the last two, I think, or maybe a little bit more context are needed there for various applications. If you remember from the site plan we looked at, there's very little, there's, it's surrounded by either light industrial, industrial, CBI, and we have very little visibility on Web Road. So if you had a project that did kind of stretch along the frontage, you may want to talk more about landscaping and, and visibility there, but we are tucked on the backside of those two. Although the road's been extended, it's off Peeler and Web or visibility. They do have some areas of buffering that they're going to maintain, but in order to develop the site, you have some areas that will need to be within those stream crossing areas. They're going to work with the DEQ and Army Corps as required is with any development. And then lastly, we do have currently, the property is in a voluntary ag district. It's a voluntary program by the property owner. It simply can be removed by the request of the owner and up within thirty days or less be removed. It's not enhanced where it's mandatory. Mr. Holmberger wanted it and he can just as easily remove it. So let me go back. So that statement is more of a general statement within the land use plan, bigger picture topic as opposed to a specific land use request and a rezoning. It's more broadly based that the board should look at the, the VAD districts and consider other benefits of why someone would choose to enroll. Let's look at the surrounding zoning on a little bit larger scale. So I touched on the Salisbury Light Industrial area. Little bit difficult contrast here, but this is all the property you see here. We have industrial in the purple. This is a L K Q Salvage Yard. The red area CBI, which this little section would join along with all this. Some more CBI, the blues are ED two zones. This is the, what we called the Platinum Site for years. Cox Communications on it now. One thing too, this is not part of the development plan, but this is an RR zone track that's currently being marketed and we received several calls for commercial development possibilities. So board may see one of those in twenty three. As part of any project of a certain size, DOT requires TIA's to look at the traffic impact. Before we get to that, our basic approach that staff uses with, without a TIA would be, you look at your annual, average annual daily traffic. This part of Web Road is about thirty four hundred trips. Seventy two hundred is on the west side near the railroad track. And the CTP capacity says twelve thousand two hundred for Web Road. It's a general term in reference based on a handful of qualifiers. So you see the current traffic count, the capacities for the various roads. But as part of the TIA, Kimley Horn did prepare a study and the first input that you do within a study would be your proposed use. The industrial park with one and a quarter million square foot was chosen as most likely tied to the development proposal here. And in that forty two hundred trips are proposed to be generated by this project. So that's your input that you start with your TIA. Then, as we've seen before, these type of evaluations, you have the output measures that are level of service letter grades to tell you how that intersection would function currently and then a no build condition in the future and then a build condition, which that represents the projects built and in operation at a specific time. And for this, you have signalized and unsignalized intersections. None of them currently are signalized, but we do have a few projects in the area that will trigger the need for a signal and you'll see that in the next spreadsheet. The intersections that were studied would be Web at the new access point, Lane and Peeler, and then the north and southbound ramps on eighty five at both Web and Peeler. So when you compare AM and PM, our existing condition, right now, nothing built. And then the build out with the plan that you saw completely in operation, in addition to any known projects that DOT has or the communities that have been contacted. So the, the North Point project on Web Road's part of it. You have the Salisbury Satellite, that's incorporated too in this twenty five build out. So the changes that you see are not all based on this project, but you know, as best we know, projects in the next two more years. When you compare this, there's arguably little change from current, these, these are east, west, north and southbound movements and then the overall intersection. This is the only one that kind of stands out as a change. That's at Peeler and the northbound ramp. The recommend, proposed, and I just got on the thirtieth, DOT's acceptance of that study with those recommendations. They are now DOT approved, so that will be part of a driveway permit. And if this board approves the plan, then they're required to make a few improvements. And the first is one they committed to, and I think that staff and the board will agree is important in this project, one of which is to complete the two third mile extension of Lane Parkway. The incredible benefit both to traffic on Peeler and also this project, Web Road movements. Another way, you got our frontage road, we, it's dead ends and this now we'll complete it, provide another option for folks. And from the access point off of Web, the first improvement would be a right hand turn on the northbound ramp at eighty five, hundred foot storage and then hundred and fifty foot of storage of on a left turn from Web going into the Peeler Road extension. So those are the two improvements along with the recognition that the road will be completed all the way through to, or Lane will connect from Peeler to Web is the last improvement. So this bullet point can be updated because we do have an approval. And staff with any rezoning, we send out notice to folks within a hundred feet. And this represents a little bit more than a hundred feet, but there's twenties, twenty three letters, folks in blue. Put a sign up on Web into Peeler. We did receive several calls and several folks showed up at the planning board meeting. I believe six, five people spoke during the, the hearing and there's some here tonight. And most of those were, at least at the staff level, just inquired about the request and I'm sure they'll share their comments here tonight. But, and then lastly is the notice requirement in the Salisbury Post, eleven twenty four and twelve one. Planning board recommended approval with some conditions. So we would need to consider both the statement, reasonableness consistency. It's one statement. I'll share that with you. It wasn't available for, when I put the material together, but I'll share that in a second. And we need a motion for proving, denying or tabling the request. And the conditions are four. The first would be complete the road to DOT standards prior to the first CO on either building. Two, subject to the approved table of use list provided tonight. Three, honored to remove the VAD designation. Four, this is the rezoning areas to be combined with the respective properties. So this will be the DNA track, all is industrial as one tract. CBI CD is all one tract as well. And this is the statement of consistency and reasonableness provided by the board. Any questions?
Went through planning board, had a planning board vote. All right, questions for Shane? All right. All right, we'll invite the applicant if they have anything they'd like to bring forward. Look forward to hearing from you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kason Boothey. I'm a vice president with Rooker Development. Rooker and Track West Partners have formed RP Salisbury LLC a joint venture partnership, which will be the developer of this project. I am here to answer any questions that you all might have and I'm also here to introduce our project team. My company, Rooker, and our partner, Track West, have combined to develop sixty million square feet of Class A industrial office and retail real estate across the southeastern United States. We are private, both privately held, real estate companies focused on developing top quality real estate projects that will attract new companies, new industries and new jobs to Rowan County. We've been doing this a long time at Rooker. We've developed hundreds of these projects across the southeastern United States since our founding in nineteen sixty seven. And I am confident that we will design and build a project that the county can be proud of. We will likely build this project without any tenants signed up or committed. That means that future, the future market demand will dictate the tenants and companies that occupy this project. Most times these days, when companies need a new building of this size, they do not have time to wait for one to be built. This project will provide an inventory of space that will be critical to the county's recruiting efforts in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. And I'd like, I'd now like to introduce our team members, Chris Corey and Austin Watts. Chris is a real estate attorney with Nexon Pruitt, who's assisting us through the rezoning process. And Austin Watts is a civil engineer with Kimley Horn. Kimley is one of the nation's top planning, design and engineering firms. And we have engaged Kimley and Austin to help us design and engineer the site. So I'm going to let Chris and Austin pick up the presentation here. Thank you, and again, I'm here to answer any questions you all have for the developer.
Good evening, Austin Watts with Kimley Horn. We'll briefly go through a couple of slides here. Shane did an excellent job summarizing the, the overall development. But to reiterate, this is our give or take hundred acre site and Lane Parkway is to the north, Web Road is to the south. Our access point will be a, a continuation of Lane Parkway that we're currently coordinating with NC DOT for that to be a public NC DOT road that will connect down to Web Road in the south. We'll get into that here whenever we talk about the site plan. You can see it's an existing vacant agricultural site to the south is basically a car lot. And then this is future industrial, this is CBI, and then potential future CBI here in industrial to the north. But here is the site plan, very similar to the one Shane showed. The only difference is in response to a planning board comment was to extend this an extra fifty feet to the west in order to provide additional screening for the residents in this particular housing development. This is our almost one million square foot building. This is truck loading on the north and south end of that. Associate parking on the ends and then this is a rear load to the south. This will probably be built second. This building will be first. Building two would come in at a later date. Truck parking on the south and employee parking in the north. Again, you can see the piece that we're working to obtain from DNA is a swamp for the blue area to allow us to connect to Lane. And then that Lane Parkway extension will extend all the way down to, to the south. We've got a little bit of wetland, a little bit of stream in here that will coordinate with NC DEQ and the Army Corps of Engineers in order to permit. This is a, an example of some of the elevations, building elevations that Rooker and Track West have built in the past. So this will be Class A office space tilt up, but a very quality looking product.
Could the flag be bigger?
Make the flag bigger, yes.
You're saying that is an example of what you build or just an example?
That's, that's an example of the type of quality that they build. The, the actual elevation will look very similar to this. And so as Shane mentioned, NC DOT, as of the thirtieth came through and said that the TIA that one of my colleagues put together and submitted has been approved. And so that will be a left turn lane into the site from Web onto Lane Parkway and then a right turn lane from Web onto I eighty five.
Thanks, Austin. My name's Chris Corey. I'm a lawyer at Nexon Pruitt, delighted to be here tonight and appreciate very much all's attention to this matter. And I just wanted to go over a few points to summarize about the project narrative. Some of this was captured in the earlier presentation, but just wanted to succinctly highlight these points that the project will be comprised of two building, Class A industrial speculative development. One building again, nine hundred and four thousand square feet for a single or multi tenant building. Second building would be over three hundred thousand, about three hundred and thirty two thousand square feet for single or multi tenant building use. Really noteworthy is the extension of a new DOT approved road, Lane Parkway extension, which would tie together connectivity for the Web Road and Peeler Road exits off of eighty five. And then there will also be required sanitary sewer extension that can serve not only this project, but adjacent developments. And some project benefits we wanted to highlight. We think there are many, but these are some significant ones that were worth mentioning right here tonight. First, it's development of underutilized property. Next, again, the improved road connectivity is significant. This project will lead to, will provide an additional source of local jobs for residents. It's consistent with the surrounding development and adjacent land use and zoning designations. It will provide and lead to more adequate public facilities. It's going to provide additional tax revenue to support county long-term goals. And again, it's development of additional infrastructure. We've had several conversations as this project has gone forward with your Rowan Economic Development Team. Rod Kreider and Scott Shelton are very excited about this project. They're excited that it's another asset they can use to recruit and promote new business, choosing Rowan County as its home. And we wanted to highlight a few economic impact points about this project. Roughly, it's going to lead to over seven hundred thousand annually in recurring public revenue for the county. That's based on the fact that the project itself and real property improvements is going to be about a hundred million, about ninety seven million dollars of investment. Every dollar may not be captured in assessed value, but this is also not capturing any personal business. personal business property that would also be put in that facility and would lead to public revenue. So we feel like that's a conservative estimate. There's going to be significant public revenue there. Again, this project is going to be a good source to recruit and create new jobs. The project's expected to generate at the size 300 to 600 full-time jobs in logistics, distribution, or light manufacturing. And again, just to reiterate, the folks with your economic development team are really excited and supportive of this project. Those are some key points. And again, delighted to be here and appreciate your support and just wanted to answer any questions y'all might have now.
Are you all developing this lane street and plus, or Lane, is it Boulevard? Lane Parkway? Plus the turn lanes, are you all? Are you funding that yourself?
Yes, that's correct. So it'd be funded by the developer.
Got a question for you. If this is approved, what type of timeframe are you looking at for completion of the first building?
Good question. We, we expect that, that we can probably be approved for permits to start construction sometime in the summer. That, that would be the best possible scenario for us, which would mean that typically with a project of this size, you're looking at between 12 and 18 months of construction time until we have a, a building that's up and ready for occupancy. So, so we'd be looking at completing this building probably late in 2024 is my best guess. So third, third, third or fourth quarter 2024.
Would you be moving immediately to go ahead and put in the, the road structures that need to be put in as well as the sewer and water infrastructure?
Yes, sir. Our first construction work would be extending Lane Parkway and completing that new public road, doing all the utility work that would be required, including connecting the sanitary sewer to the properties on the eastern side of our property and site work. So, you know, we would do all of that in one construction project. That, that would be the first construction that we do on the site.
Do you have any potential occupants at this time?
We do not at this time. It's still early, early days for that. Typically, we see prospect activity really pick up once we have walls up. So, you know, usually a tenant really wants to see the building, you know, building up and, and, and so they can really visualize what it's going to look like, what the access looks like, and what the, what the interior looks like as well. So at this time, we don't have any tenants or prospects, but that is usual and typical for us at this point in the project. So I, I would say, you know, it's certainly a, a project that, you know, we're exciting about making this investment here because we believe that this is a great location and a great county for these companies. And so, you know, it is a risk that we're taking to make a $97 million investment without a tenant or a prospect in tow.
What happens if, and let's hope this doesn't happen, let's say we, we approve this and you move forward and six to eight months from now, the economy tanks, and all of a sudden you've got grading out there, you've got your roads put in, and we end up with a big mud hole. I mean, what, what, what's your contingency plan if that happens?
Well, we, like I, like I said before, I mean, we've, we've been developing projects like this since the 1960s. So we have, we have systems in place to make sure that whatever construction work we do will be stabilized. Even if we do, we start a site work project and don't start the building immediately, we have multiple sites around the southeast where we've put the stormwater ponds in up front. We put all the infrastructure in up front and we stabilize the site per state requirements so that you've got grass growing on the site. You don't have a, you know, a mud hole, so to speak, as, as you put it. So it's erosion control and all those measures are very important to us and we make sure we prepare the site in a way that if we do have to stop for a period of time, we'll still have a good site that's not going to be a problem in terms of erosion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What would, what example of a business that may want to move in there? Do you have any examples of other ones that you've?
Sure. Sure. It could be, could be major retailers. We've done a number of transactions lately with retailers, consumer products companies, some Fortune 500 companies that you would recognize on the consumer side, industrial products, building products, food and beverage, distribution. So it, it really automotive related parts distribution. So it really kind of runs the gamut. There are a lot of different industries that can locate in a building like this. We try to build it in a flexible manner and design it in a flexible manner so that we have a lot of different options in terms of the type of tenant that comes in.
You could have some manufacturing, not just distribution there?
Yes, sir. We could have light, we could accommodate light manufacturing and assembly in this building. And that's, that, that will definitely be another, another source of tenants that we will prospect and do our best to bring, bring to Rowan.
You know, Rowan County's in the spotlight these days and there's a lot coming here. I know you know that, right? Make you nervous at all?
It, it does not. There's a reason that a lot of, a lot of other developers and investors are coming here to invest. I mean, they see the potential and they see the population growth and, and all the infrastructure that you all have here that you guys have put in over the years and those long-term investments are going to pay off. You know, it's North Carolina as a state, Charlotte as a metro are both great places to invest. I mean, investors all over the world know about North Carolina, sharp metro Charlotte. And, and if you're in the industrial real estate business, you know about the I-85 corridor and Rowan County now. So, you know, we, we believe in all the fundamentals and the long-term growth that's going to happen here. So even if it, if it were to take us a little bit longer, I mean, we're fine with that. We have a long-term horizon on this investment and this development.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Hang around in case we have some more questions, okay? All right, we're going to open the floor and we're going to have a public comment period now. So we look forward to hearing any public comments we have. So if anyone has any, come forward, state your name for the record and, and welcome.
My name is Marnita Parks and I live at 1405 Web Road, but I'm also representing 1311 Web Road, which is my son's farm, which is across the road from LKQ salvage yard. I don't have a problem with the project per se. It's the road coming into Web Road. How is the trucks from Love's Truck Stop going to be addressed coming into this public road and coming out of Love's, taking a right and coming onto Web Road 24/7? Will they be allowed to use this road since it is a public road?
The lane?
Lane Parkway. They go out Lane Parkway from Love's to the left, but now they will be coming to the right. And I'm assuming going in from the right, once the word gets around, that it's a lot easier to get in and out from that end. And these trucks are out of state. They're here today, gone tomorrow. I know they block Lane Parkway as evident from the owner of the property has told me himself that he can't get to his farmland because they block access to the farmland. I guess that's why he's selling the property. He has to bang on the side of the trucks to wake them up to get in and out. I would like to know how that's going to be addressed or the truck's going to be allowed to come out into Web Road. Also, besides my son and myself, there are two other farmers that use Web Road to farm our land, which we have heavy machinery going up and down Web Road. At the present time, we have no speed limit sign. So at any given time, you can have somebody running up the road 30 miles an hour, or you could have someone doing over 100. And we have no farm machinery signs, no way that lets people know that there are farms on that road if they even care. Let's see. I would like to, at the very least, get a speed limit sign and maybe a farm crossing sign at the very least. I would like the road stopped because I don't know how it's going to handle all these trucks from Love's unless they're going to tell them not to go right, which I don't know if they're going to, if that's going to be possible since it is a public road. And my other suggestion is, why couldn't they just put a roundabout outside this building that they're building? Or let these trucks that go into this building go around the building and then exit back out Lane Parkway into Peeler Road like they do now? That would, and they could put a light out there for the truck drivers and for their trucks. But my main concern is all the trucks 24/7 coming out into Web Road. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shane is, the top of this photo is that Love's up on Peeler? And there's?
We could get that pulled back up. I can't see from here. Eyes are getting bad.
All right. It's small.
Their love is just right here.
So the question then is, they come out of Love's, take a right? I mean, the concern is they take a right and come down Lane Parkway? And in order to use Web Road? That what the concern is?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll be able to do that very easily.
Right turn would be much easier for me. Turn they're taking now to get out of Love's and the left turn to get back onto the interstate.
The location where the proposed access road is right here has, is a location that has, if anybody's driven down Web Road, is very poor visibility because it comes to, it's, it's not a very steep hill, but it's a little bit of a hill and it's a corner. So you could have somebody coming down the road 70, 80 miles an hour because they think there's no speed limit signs so they can drive wherever they want. And if you have a truck stop right here or attempting to turn in, this person is going to come down 70 miles an hour, slam right into them and won't have time to stop before the trucking gets in.
But isn't that all, play devil's advocate?
No, I understand. I understand.
Isn't that all about the change though? Because also on Web Road, we have a new 725,000 square foot.
Oh, you're referring to the property over here, correct?
Oh, that, that's on the other side.
Yes, this is on the other side.
Other side, that's correct.
Yes, you're talking about the one over here, yes. However, it doesn't change the fact that there are people that just don't care about standard speed limits. And they, I understand that even if you have a speed limit sign, doesn't mean they're going to care about that either. But this is a long, relatively straight stretch of road. And like I'll, I'll be sitting, I'll be laying in bed at night, 2:00 AM in the morning here or somebody's zooming down the road 80 miles an hour on a motorcycle. And if there's a truck coming out of here, there's, somebody's going to get hurt most likely. We've had two wrecks, I believe, here at this intersection in the last that I've seen. Well, it's not intersection, but where the intersection is proposed to be. That's, oh, sorry, Jacob Parks. I live at 1311 Web Road. Yes. The, the, our primary concern involves the access road. That is, and the, we, we, because we, we live on the road, so we know the kind of traffic and the types of individuals that drive down that road.
Shane, thank you.
You want to get Shane to address the DOT's role and?
Yes.
Probably be good to address DOT's role in the road design and access and turnout lanes and things like that.
Wasn't there a traffic light going to be at Peeler and Lane? I see that.
Yes, and I think that's from this project here.
Yeah, so, so they may want to, I guess there's not one there now. So it would be easier for them to make left-hand turns with the light there now. If they're coming out of the side of Love's.
DOT definitely wants this road to be built as part of that project. So it's essential, at least from the TIA standpoint, but the, the signal here, I guess, is, is arguable with the traffic here and the left turn movements. You got the school over here, this project here. Kim Lee Hornmark can address this easier, but, so there's a light here and I think one other, and then there's one recommended on this side, but it may not happen. But in terms of that movement, what trucks will do here, yes, this provides them another option out. But it's, it's addressed Lane Parkway. This is the easiest movement unless you're talking about peak times. Then folks may do something differently. But if they're coming at 2:00 in the morning, you would think they're going to go here. That's the most easy route. But yes, there's times where there's a little bit of a backup. But for this project and also to help the, the overall area, yes, you're going to put more trucks on Web Road, but there'd only be one way into this site if you didn't connect it all the way through. That's another important factor. That's the only way in here. There's no other connection over here to a, a public road.
So Mike's question was, is there going to be a traffic light there at Lane and Peeler?
Yes.
All right, so that'll, for those truckers who are terrified of turning left, and that would encourage them to turn right and go down Lane Parkway, that light will be, will provide them the perceived safety they need to, to turn left and avoid this piling up on the Web Road onto Lane Parkway.
Another option, correct?
Shane, has the DOT even discussed the possibility of starting to put more roundabouts in these busy areas? You know, I drive in other places of, of North Carolina and I'm seeing them all over, I mean, Campbell, this is a good example. And the one they put out there for Food Lion, so the trucks didn't have to stop at that inner circle. Especially when speed is involved and we're afraid of accidents, it just seems to me that, that is a very, very safe way of slowing the traffic down and having fewer accidents. Has there been any, any discussion at all?
I mean, there's definitely benefits to that approach at certain intersections. I think the challenge here is the proximity of lane to your first movement choice at your ramps. Same thing down here at Lee Troy, but one of the things that was mentioned at the planning board is there a way to get it closer, come through here, but that also pushes your proximity. You, you've got so many, there's not a lot of storage, you're just forcing all the traffic movements in a small, tight window. So I don't know that a roundabout would be the, the answer up here considering, I'm not sure if they're still interested, but there is a development proposal here in addition to this project. So roundabout would be awfully tight right there to interchange.
All right, thanks Shane.
I think another thing we need to look at is that if you're going to have that manufacturing or industrial areas, we need to have access on both sides for emergency vehicles. We don't want to get them jammed up if we only have one entrance. That way they'll have two different directions they can near the property.
All right, do we have anyone else that would like to speak? Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Carl Haynes. I reside at 1115 Web Road. The turn lane will be right in front of our property. I want to thank you, County Commissioners, for your diligence in working to improve the economy of this county by bringing in new construction for commercial buildings and consequently new jobs. I'm not opposed to the construction plan for the property at 1200 Web Road. However, as has already been expressed, I do have concerns regarding the placement of the entrance. As has already been expressed, I do have concerns regarding the placement of the entrance to the proposed site. The proposed entrance is amid residential homes and a farm. It is too close to the entrance of L K Q Salvage Yard. And it's on the lower side of a hill, which has already been mentioned, that creates a visibility hazard when pulling out of our driveways. If rezoning for this construction project is approved, I would strongly plead for you, the Commissioners, to work with the D N A Real Estate Partners in working out a better. Safer solution to the entrance onto Web Road. At least three of the homes beside and in front of the proposed entrance have children. And one of them keeps grandchildren during the week. You, the Commissioners, are to be applauded for your good work in bringing much-needed business and commerce to Rowan County. I ask that you be equally diligent. In working to ensure the safety and quality of life of the residents who will be affected by this project. By placing the entrance away from the proposed site if at all possible. At the Rowan County Planning Department meeting last Monday evening, I suggested the possibility of combining the entrance to this project with that of L K Q's. D N A Real Estate Partners were open to this possibility, or at least to talking with L K Q. The Hearst property is has been mentioned is available for purchase and would make, I believe, a better entrance choice. As it would be beside and in front of existing buildings and further down from the hill. And less likely for accidents. So I would like to also ask you, Commissioners, to lower the speed limit. On Web Road from fifty-five to forty-five miles an hour. This would slow traffic within what is certainly to be a highly congested area and hopefully reduce the risk of accidents. I'd like to thank you for your faithfulness to the citizens of Rowan County and for considering my request.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Any others?
Hi and welcome.
Uh, my name's Brenda Kaiser. Um, I've lived out there for about forty years. And like to live the rest of my life out there without having to move or anything.
What's your address, Ms. Kaiser?
Twelve oh five Web Road. The way I figure the road, the turning road is gonna be right in front of my house. I would like to know what the design of that road, how is it going to be done? Also, because of the way. You turn in, is that gonna be in the turning lane gonna be in the middle or or what? The second thing I need is to talk about is the speed. We have, as has been said. Um, we do have a lot of cars going down, back and forth. Sometimes I even think at night. While I'm in bed, I hear like cars going like doing like a racing down that street, that road. Um, I might be wrong, but it sure does sound like it. Um, also during the day, we've got buses that goes down that road. We've got fire trucks. We've got police cars. Uh, that's going back and forth from the twenty-nine to. Um, Con- Concord Highway. And that's the way they go in order to get to the other side of the the for emergencies and things like that. Um. Another thing is. Uh. When it. Rain, when it snows and the road's slippery. And that road's in front of my house. What's gonna happen if that vehicle, that truck? Or the worker that's working there? If they their vehicle cannot get stopped. Or either they hit the gas by accident. And it's gonna be going right in where our living room is and our kitchen. And we could be sitting in there and be killed right then. There's gonna be. It's prom- promoted that proposed that there's a. What? Three hundred to six hundred employees. You've got all that traffic coming in and out. And like they have said that from. Uh, from Lane and Peeler Road. That they're gonna be coming down. Easier for them to get out, come down Web Road, turn, you're right there at the interstate. Lot easier. Will be a lot more trucks. You got L K Q. They've got trucks coming in all time of the day. And. It's, you know, not only that, you've got traffic and stuff that's coming from the. Flea market. You know? So there's, there is a lot of traffic on that road. And. I don't know what else to say. Because. I would think that maybe. They could come. And come out right there at the corner of L K Q. And then that way that would not be in anybody's. Um. Front yard really. Because the house that's beside us, there's nobody that lives there. He's live someplace else. And uh. I just thank you for for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kaiser. Is there anyone else? Anyone else? One once? Twice? Alright, we'll close the public hearing. Shane, could we talk to you once again? Um, I've heard L K Q and I should know this, but. Can you tell me what is it that?
Salvage yard. Yes, sir.
So I've heard that if they could share a drive, but doesn't that? Kind of push it closer toward what I've heard described as a crown? Road there?
I mean, are you speaking of trying to acquire or work with them to obtain? Because they'd have to dedicate road right of way to to build a road through there. I think there's a, this is a drainage easement through here too.
So then the, that one kind of doesn't make much sense to me, but the only other opportunity would be to combine with Hearst Drive. Has there been any conversation about that at all? One of you address that?
We have had conversations with the the two owners. Uh, the agent who's representing the two owners that own the two parcels there at Hearst Drive. Um, we don't have control over that property. They just listed it for sale. Um. As was mentioned, there is a pond that you can see. Um, here. That's a pretty significant part of the property. Um. That we have concerns about. Um. So. Uh, and and I think Austin might address also this location. For a drive, but again, we don't have control over this property and, you know, and we do have concerns about this pond as well that's located there.
Yes, Austin Watts with Kimberly Horn. I'm happy to address a number of these concerns. Uh, but the first and foremost, we don't, this is not part of our project. We don't, we don't own, we don't control this piece of property. Um, but the location that we have here is what we coordinated with N C D O T. Uh, we, whenever we first met with the various parties, N C D O T wanted the location. In in this general vicinity, we talked about locate or the distance that they wanted from L K Q. Uh, they agree with where we currently show our particular driveway. There has been discussion of can L K Q connect to our, this new public road, this Lane Parkway? Uh, that'll be an N C D O T road, uh, whenever we're done, but we would not be able to connect through through L K Q. We would, they might be able to connect through us. Um, as far as will any Love trucks come into and go down Lane Parkway, more than likely, there will be some sort of traffic from Loves. But that was baked into the approved T I A. Um, from a, from a distance standpoint, we're about fifteen hundred feet or so from the interchange. And that's a nice distance because it does set you up to be able to qualify for a signal at some point in the future. If you have, once you meet signal warrants, Web Road, I know there's concern about the amount of traffic on Web, but. The actual amount of traffic on Web is not great enough to warrant a signal at this time. Uh, the same would go for a roundabout. You have to meet various either signal warrants or roundabout warrants. Uh, in in order to be allowed to do that by N C D O T. And so far, there's nothing, there's not enough volume on Web to trip that and allow us to be able to do that. But with this distance, it does allow us to have a signal at some point in the future.
How many lanes is that road gonna be?
Um, Lane Parkway, the the new extension, it will match the the section that's out there, but it'll be two lanes with the occasional turn lane internal to the site.
Okay, so it's not gonna be two with one turn lane the whole way or be just?
Um, let's see, I don't know if it's which. If there's, my site plans in here, here we go. Um, yes, it'll be a two-lane road and then it'll bulb out. So you'd have a potential turn lanes here, you have potential turn lanes. Internal to the site, but it would be a two-lane road for the most part.
There won't be anywhere for trucks to park out there?
No, the the intent is that there's not truck parking along that road. I know that's a concern. Uh, that's an existing concern that's up here, but that's not, this would be an N C D O T road. And frankly, that's not something that that these tenants would tolerate to have trucks blocking, blocking an N C D O T road.
See, actual um. Intersection with Lake Park Lane and Web is only like two lanes or will that also be three? Do you have a turn lane?
Um, it's just a, it's two lane at the at the intersection. It'd be, um, you'd have a, an in and an out.
Interesting.
So I think someone asked where the turn lane would be. And so that would, if you're, if you're traveling from eighty-five to. A Lane Parkway, it would be a center turn lane, correct?
Yes, it'd be in the center of the road.
Alright, any other questions for them? Alright, thank you guys again. Alright, so we've closed a public hearing. Um. So, um. Certainly, as we are are seeing more and more of these, we. We do hear a lot of these concerns and questions often become of traffic. We've got concerns about traffic. And and to be honest with you, um. So we we've got a three business people and a. A retired farmer pastor and a a police officer. So we are not in, we are not traffic engineers. Um, there's a lot that we're not. We're, our staff attorney would be happy to know that I'm not an attorney. Um, and so we have to rely on folks who have. Uh, the education and training and even licensure. Uh, to be doing these studies. And so none of this is done. Where a a developer builder is allowed to do a project. Where there is a road that is not. Adequate for the traffic to be handled there. Not not only the road volume of traffic. But the topography of the road. So. As a, as DOT, I'm sure physically met out there, did they not? And they stand there at, on Web Road and they're looking up and down the road and they're saying, well, this is where we want Lane Road. To terminate end to end, correct? Um, we don't want it that way. We don't want it that way. This is where we're gonna ask you or require you to put it. And as they look up Web Road toward where we say maybe a crest in the road, they're taking that into account. Uh, this is what they do. And so. While ultimately we're the Commissioners that decide, we we have to rely on our planning department. We rely on the professional engineers at DOT to determine for us. Uh, whether the road itself and the topography is safe. Uh, whether the distance between drives are are safe. Uh, and whether the the road is adequate to carry not only the current. Traffic, but the future traffic that this type of project will bring. And so we certainly hear, having said all that, we certainly hear the concerns about traffic because it's just different. It's different than what we're used to. But what we're seeing is these eighty-five exits in these corridors. Uh, we knew this would happen at some point in history, and so that point seems to be now. And so we will rely on, at least from my position. Uh, my one seat will rely on the the licensed, educated engineers to tell us. Um, if it qualifies or not, and in this case, they don't seem to have any concerns whatsoever. Will it be different? It will be. But does it present a safety hazard? That's what they're there to do is to determine. What needs to happen from a safety perspective. So I'm okay on that. Um, because that's what they're telling us. Um, any other comments from Commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few to the concerned citizens out here. Um, first of all, to the gentleman that said lower the speed limit, we we don't have authority to do that. That's only N C D O T. And you will have an opportunity to address these problems to them. They will have a public hearing just like we're having. They normally have it in an adjacent fire station or something. It's convenient for the public to come out. And you can address to them the concerns you have and tell them what you think maybe some positive alternatives may be. But we, as the Commission, we're simply looking at the zoning. We don't have any control over the highways. We don't have any control over where the exits go, where the driveways come out. One thing I will tell you, we just recently. Um, uh, completed the construction of a new dog adoption ring on Julian Road. Which was next to the new John Deere facility, James Rivers. And there was a concern about that entrance being too narrow for the amount of traffic and DOT made us change that entrance. So there is some flexibility available to you, but we don't have the flexibility afforded to us. We depend on DOT and like Chairman Ed says, to their engineers and their expertise to design the road. To be optimal for everybody involved. And I think you'll have an opportunity before all of this happens, if it happens. And express your concerns and they will listen and they will try to come up with some alternatives. That fit your needs better than maybe what's being proposed. So we are not your last stop. You're you. Planning board was your first stop. We were second stop, but you're not. You your concerns are not falling on deaf ears. It's just we we are limited into what we can actually do as Commissioners. And when you start talking about state dollars, we don't have no control over those. But maybe your suggestion about lower the speed limit, I don't think that's an unreasonable request. Um, as far as the the trucks coming in and out of the truck stop, they're gonna do what they want to do anyway. I mean, we we. West End Plaza out here, we got signs all over says, don't park here at night. You go out there anytime. There's tractor trailers all over the place. So so what are we supposed to do? You know, go out there and write tickets? I mean, you know, our police officers have better things to do than that. So. Um, but I wanted to let you know your 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 concerns are not not being listened to. It's just we have very limited. Access to what we can do for you right now. Our concern tonight is the zoning. That's what we have control over. But I would, I would tell you. Wholeheartedly, when the public hearings come out from DOT concerning these roads, you need to go and say just. concerning these roads, you need to go and say just exactly what you did here tonight. And I think they should put up a sign showing postings. And I'm, I'm sure the media, local media will make sure that that story gets told. But just wanted to let you guys know if, if it was something we could do to to alter this, as far as the roads, we would, we would take that into consideration, but we don't have the authorities for roads. I mean, I get calls all the time about, oh, there's a pothole out here and such. I will call DOT. Well, you know, we're not, we're not the state. So I just want to let you know how it works so that you'll be prepared to know what to do that when the next public hearing comes out.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reiterate, Craig did a great job of explaining our position. I'm in a situation where I'm on the road with tractors and heavy equipment and stuff. And so I understand the dangers of that and I wish I had an answer for it. But people on the roads are stupid at times and, and we, we understand that. And as Craig has said, we, we don't control the roads at all. Don't have any responsibility for the roads. I would encourage you to do exactly as Mr. Pierce, Commissioner Pierce has said and go to the meetings to the folks that do control this. We find generally though, that they have excellent engineers on the state side and from the construction side. They have people that know what they're doing because they do this, as they've told us in many different places, many different states. So I'm sure they will do their best to, to satisfy all of the neighborhood. Most commercial folks that come in want to be good neighbors. They donate money. They do a lot of things to help the community besides just pay big taxes. But thank you, we, we appreciate everybody coming and giving us their opinion tonight. And unfortunately, your problem is that you were in the middle of some of the most expensive land and some of the most progressive construction areas that we have through here. And so we understand your plight and wish that there was more that we could do for you. But thank you for being here and letting us know.
I'll add one thing that we, we do have access to a DOT engineer. We have someone that's assigned to us. So absolutely, we can pick up the phone and call the DOT engineer and say, hey, will you take a look at that? They'd, we can say to them, hey, we had folks that came in. Will you take a look at the speed limit there? Can, can you analyze that? And we're asking if you could go down to forty-five. So we can initial, we can initiate that and that's not a problem.
Now, I just look at my notes here. If, if we're going to contact the engineer about that, we might can mention the farm equipment sign they would like to get.
Shane, I don't know if you provided our consistency and, but I, I know it's on the screen, but it's not in our packet. All right, so I'll offer up as a statement of consistency and reasonableness. Z O nine, and I do this in the form of a motion, Z O nine dash two-two is consistent with the East Area Land Use Plan and reasonable and appropriate based on the following. One, it's located within ID five corridor and commercial industrial areas. Two, it's adjacent to similar uses. Three, water and sewer will be extended to the site. And four, traffic impact analysis with improvements show the roads can handle anticipated traffic. We have a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So then I would make a motion that we take into consideration four conditions, which we only had three. But one is prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, Lane Parkway Extension must be constructed and certified. And there he is, there he is. The N C D O T standards, two, property uses are subject to the list approved as part of the conditional district. Three, property owner will request removal of the voluntary ag district designation. And four, industrial zone portion must be combined with parcel four oh nine oh two and the one acre C B I C D portion from four oh nine oh two with four oh nine oh five. So I make a motion that we approve that based on those, or that we approve Z O nine dash twenty-two of those four conditions. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. All right, we are done with that. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.